Everyone. To our regular meeting Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. Mr. Montgomery, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember May.
Here.
Thank you. And would you lead us in the pledge, please? Oh, yes.
A brief note, this is a special meeting.
Oh, okay. I'm just reading on the agenda here. It says regular at the top. Mm-hmm. Okay, noted. All right, please.
All right, thank you. Welcome, community, Honorable Mayor and Council. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move to approve it.
Second. Any objections? Okay. Great, move forward. Any commission reports? Do you have anything, Mr. Montgomery? Nope, okay.
None submitted, Mayor.
Thank you. City Managers' report.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to turn things over to Ms. Cervantes to talk about an exciting holiday event.
Thanks.
Perfect.
I see the excitement already.
Mayor, council members, we were invited to join the Christmas caravan in Oakview, and we will be getting the Ojai trolley to take us down, and you are all welcome to join us. So please let me know if you all are available and willing to be at the caravan on Saturday, December 13th at 5:00 PM, and we will also be inviting commissioners.
Wonderful. Nope, super great. Thank you for that. Anything else?
No, Mayor, that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I will now open it to public communications. I have one card so far, and that's from Mr. Steve Quilcie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Hello.
Right now, I'm wearing my city clerk hat. I'll be back later without it. I wanted to let the the public know and the mayor and and city council members as well that there's a lot going on with the Fair Political Practices Commission. And we will be furthering the automation of the filing requirements. This is for candidates for election or reelection, or their committees, either controlled committees or independent committees, as well as for, excuse me, other elected officials and planning commissioners. There will be a lot of different forms that have to be done. The clerk's office, which is to say Weston and a bunch of contractors doing most of the work, will be happy to guide people through that minefield. Also, we have seen from our current Assistant City Manager, City Attorney, excuse me, information about Senate Bill 707 and Senate Bill 827. The first has to do with the way the city has to do things as it meets, as you are meeting now. The second has to do with training of elected officials and others. And so look for that to come along and keep your eyes peeled on the city clerk website.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for all your great work. I have no more cards. Anything online?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one raised hand from Brian. Brian, you have the ability to unmute, and you may speak.
Hi there. Thank you so much. My name is Brian Schumacher, and I am the Advocacy and Community Impact Manager for Autism Society Ventura County. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our dedicated advocacy committee, who meet weekly to ensure that the voices of individuals with disabilities are heard in policy decisions that affect their lives. I'd like to express our strong support for Item 5 on tonight's agenda, the Proposed Climate Resilience and Fire Preparedness Education Partnership with Nordhoff High School. This initiative represents a fantastic opportunity for our community, and we're really excited about its potential impact. We do, however, wish to emphasize that this partnership must be developed through the lens of universal design. It's critical that students with disabilities, including those with autism, are involved at every stage, from its creation through its implementation. Their unique perspectives and needs must be woven into the program to ensure that it truly benefits all students. We believe that by forming connections with advocacy groups like ASBCs, that the city can tap into a wealth of insight that will help shape a more inclusive initiative. We're here to offer our support, definitely, and ready to share our knowledge and to help ensure that every student feels empowered and valued throughout this process. By actively engaging diverse voices and including those of students with disabilities, we can create a program that exemplifies inclusivity and resilience. So this approach not only aligns with best practices in education, but also enhances our community's ability to respond to climate challenges effectively. So we urge the city, under your leadership, Mayor Gilman, to ensure that this initiative incorporates inclusive strategies and that the voices of all students are represented. Together, we look forward to leading Ojai to be a model of inclusivity in climate education and resilience. And thank you for your time and dedication to making Ojai a supportive and inclusive community for everyone, really from all of us. To connect with our committee, please email us at advocacy@autismventura.org. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. It looks like all we have are minutes this time, but we have a lot of minutes, which are, shows how much work we've been up to. Is there any comments on the consent calendar, first off? I don't have any cards. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar? No? Move to approve the consent calendar, then? Thank you. Second. Any objections? Wonderful. Okay, on to discussion. Appointment of the new city attorney and approval of legal services agreement with Alshire and Winder LOP. Mr. Harvey.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. As you well know, since you've been involved in the process since May, the city made a decision to go out for RFQ for city attorney, went through a competitive process, interviewed firms, and in the end selected Alshire and Winder to be the firm representing the city as our new city attorney. With us tonight, we have Ms. Bethany Burgess, Ms. Carrie Raven, and forgive me, Cody Parker, all with us, representing the new city attorney's office. It's a five-year contract that is proposed, terms that were included within the submittal. I think, you know, I would rather, rather than talk about the new city attorney's contract in the office, probably turn it over to Ms. Burgess now to say a few words, and then for you for questions, and then we can go from there.
Ms. Burgess?
Please.
Good evening, Mayor Gilman, members of city council, members of the community. We are very pleased and privileged tonight to be here and to introduce ourselves to you and to initiate the great work that we'll be doing with the city of Ojai. As the city manager said, I'm Bethany Burgess. I'm a partner with Alshire and Winder. And I've, I've had a history of representing local governments. I've represented cities and other local entities for over 20 years. Alshire is a full-service local government firm, for those of us, for those of you who may not be familiar with us. And, and we have exclusively represented public entities for the last 50 years or so. We have over 65 attorneys and seven offices, six of which are in Southern California, so we have a strong presence in this region. And our firm and our attorneys are dedicated to public service and to, you know, working closely with the communities we represent. As I've, we've said before, we are thrilled, beyond thrilled, to be able to work in this community. And also, before I, we pass it back to the council, I wanted to give Carrie and Cody a moment to introduce themselves as well.
Thank you, Bethany, Mayor, and members of the council, to the community and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Ojai as an Assistant City Attorney. I, my background is, has also been in public law for the last 20 years. I am a technical specialist in land use and planning matters, so I look forward to serving as the general counsel to the city's planning commission. I have, I am a litigator as well, so to the extent that you'll need those services, I'm here for you. And we have a deep bench of attorneys that are equally passionate and, and committed to the city of Ojai and the practice of municipal law. Cody, our Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, members of council, staff members, and the community. My name's Cody Parker. I am a former teacher turned attorney. Since joining Alshire and Winder, I've been working primarily in litigation, doing writs, breach of contract, pretty much code enforcement all over. And as well, I'm serving as deputy city attorney to Rancho Palos Fair Days in the city of Fillmore as well. And likewise, I'm very excited to assume this role and help serve a community that is as engaged and cares as much about this community as you all do. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
And we can also answer any questions along with city staff or with Ms. Anderson regarding the contract.
Yes, questions, please, if there are any.
I have a question. I assume that our current city attorney has reviewed the contract and that the terms are standard and appropriate for what we're...
Yes, excellent question. Yes, the contract was reviewed by the current city attorney's office. They had some minor requested revisions, which were accepted by Alshire and Winder. And I'd like to point out that the contract and the terms are consistent with what was submitted in the proposal, which was reviewed by the city council. And then if I could just further elaborate, sorry, I know the other question that comes up because we're talking about terms. Really, if you, if you notice in the fiscal impact section of the agenda report, we don't yet have experience working with the firm as far as receiving invoices and billing. We will be better prepared to respond to you if we need to make any type of budget amendment or not at the mid-year budget, which will be in February of 2026. I think at the, you know, obviously, sorry, last thing I'll say, from now until that time period, you have more than adequate resources to fund the effort.
May I, if I can make one other thing? I did want to mention for members of the community, I know I had a chance to talk with a few of you. The other person on our team who was unable to attend tonight, Sunny Saldani, she is the managing partner of the firm, which, as I know, you all know, means that she has many different things on her plate. She wears a few different hats. Today, she was involved in an all-day mediation that prevented her from being able to attend tonight. So she, she will be here. She's, she's fully committed to the city of Ojai as well. I know some of you have worked with her before. And she, she wanted me to send her regards tonight to all of you and, and to everyone else who's here.
Thank you for saying that. I have no public comments on this item. Anything online? Yes, please. Oh, more questions, sorry.
Yeah, no, this is just, just a general sort of clarification. We had spoken when we were interviewing and doing due diligence that Ms. Saldani would be a co-counsel. But from what I understand, that government code doesn't allow a co-counsel per se, just because the language is specific to "a," meaning single. But that, for all intents and purposes, Ms. Saldani will be a co-counsel.
She will be. She will be heavily involved. We've already, you know, we've been in communication multiple times a week. I think, you know, it would be appropriate for me to just say on the record that, you know, she's fully available to each of you and, you know, will be here at meetings as needed. But also will be here for special meetings and other, other matters as needed. So, you know, as early as next week, if, you know.
Yeah. I, I just wanted the community to know as well, because many of them have associated with Ms. Saldani before and would, would welcome that.
That presence.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rule. That's helpful.
No raised hands on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay. Well, we have the contract. We spent a lot of time with these guys. Ready for a motion? Yes? Please.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the contract appointing our new city attorney with Alshire and Winder.
Second.
And I'll just make a quick comment that I don't want to go in too much to the very lengthy process of interviewing candidates. And I felt like we were really fortunate that the, you know, the two final candidates that we came up with were each one going to be, you know, anticipated to be a winner for the city. Though one thing I would say about the Alshire firm that kind of stuck out the most for me is their dedication to public service, which kind of translates to, you know, our, our community is first and foremost in how they provide their representation.
I appreciate that.
And I, and I, I really appreciated the way they conveyed that to us.
I suspect that this is going to be the first of many opportunities for the community to get to know you and ask you questions.
We look forward to it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second.
Yes, motion understood.
Thanks.
Roll call. Councilmember Whitman.
Yes?
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember May.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yay.
And if I may, just a, a, a small privilege. I just want to say that over the last few weeks, as we've been preparing for this evening, I have had a number of calls and virtual meetings with your outgoing city attorney and Assistant City Attorney, and they have been incredibly supportive and incredibly helpful. And, you know, especially Ms. Anderson has been very gracious and very accommodating and very helpful. So I want to, I just want to note that for the record.
I'm not surprised to hear that one bit. Thank you. And before we go on to 2B, I do want to say that I want to acknowledge Mr. Summers' longtime service to this city, and he's not here today. So we will postpone that honoring for when he can be here. And also, Ms. Anderson and everything they have done for us is really incredible, and we'll have his acknowledgement. So moving on to 2B, approval of the Fifth Amendment to Legal Services with Colontano, Heisman, and Watley. I've never said that whole name of it. I'm like, with Ms. Anderson and Mr. Summers. Please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As is standard practice in municipalities, when you transition from one legal firm to another, there is the opportunity to allow for a continuation contract with your prior city attorney firm. Doing this allows for business continuity. It allows for the new city attorney firm to get up to speed on the matters that are right before the council and allow some matters that maybe are trailing to, to remain with, with the prior. This is a city council decision. There are a number of items that Colontano, Heisman, and Watley could continue to represent the city in. And I'd be happy to discuss any of those with you if you so choose. This would be an amendment to the existing contract.
I'm just curious, because I know when we spoke, that you guys were going to get together and decide what's best, like how far you're into something that we have going. And I don't know if you've come up with a number, how many files, just out of curiosity?
We do not have a specific number yet. We have gone through at length a number of the pending matters, more significant matters before the city. We've, we've discussed and reviewed pending litigation. We've, you know, talked through some of the various contractual matters and other matters that are coming before the city council. And, you know, there, there may be some that I think it makes sense for the Colontuno firm to stay engaged on, but we will bring that back to you for more information as we go forward.
And so there's no, I'm not seeing anything in terms of a commitment. It's basically that we will go, as it goes on, we will determine as time goes on, what makes the most sense.
Right. I think the request would be, there's, yes, yes and no. The request would be for you to approve the contract so that in the event that we decide to transition some things, excuse me, keep some things with Colontano, you have that opportunity to do so. You don't have to.
I will add that it also allows us to be available to Ms. Burgess.
Yes.
As you know, Ojai is a very special place, and you have a lot of... I don't want to say complicated, but there's a lot of history involved.
Nuanced.
Yeah, nuance in Ojai. And so that allows us to be available to provide some of that background and, and how we got to certain decisions and share that history with Ms. Burgess and be available.
Thank you.
So I did have one. So I, I completely understand about availability for, you know, background information and for continuity. As far as, you know, continuing with certain pieces, specifically where you would be the lead, where the Colontano firm would be, would remain the lead attorney or attorney's firm, I would like that to come back to the city council so that we are completely aware of how this is divvied up and what is being continued. So I don't know if that needs to be an adjustment in this amendment or how we would actually ensure that that would come back for...
We'd be happy if I could just, sorry, not to step on you. We could take that as, as direction if the council so pleases. And we could, you could approve the contract this evening with the understanding that that approval comes with a requirement that we bring back the list of proposed items that would be continued. And that, of course, would also be a council decision to pursue those or not.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that would, I would like that if, if the rest of my, if my colleagues agree.
That sounds fine to me.
Sure.
Well, I, oh, go ahead, Mr. Whitman.
Just a quick question. I'm just assuming that the terms are essentially the terms that existed over the past, you know, period of time, and it ends just being re-upped with the same terms, but under this new context as essentially special counsel to our city attorney.
Right, essentially terms as special counsel. Yes, I would agree with that characterization.
I will acknowledge that the rates have shifted to our outside counsel rates.
That's what I was, what I was just saying.
Okay.
I would say they're still, they're on par with what we are currently using and what we're about to use.
Yes, I would agree.
Okay. Well, I, I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the Fifth Amendment to these legal services with the condition that Ms. Rule pointed out that which projects would go forward will be brought to camp.
Mayor, can we check in on public comment?
Oh, we can, but I don't have anything. Do you have anything online?
We have no raised hands.
Okay.
Thank you for that reminder. Nope, wonderful.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
Motion in a second.
Any more conversation? All right, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember May.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Abstain.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
And I do just want to make one belated comment. I agree with everything the mayor commented about our banks towards the Colontano.
Absolutely. I've, I've, Ms. Anderson, I, I, this has nothing to do with my lack of appreciation for you. It's through the roof. I, in Mr. Summers, I've never met anybody with that good of a memory in my life. And that would be a, a real treasure for our new firm going forward.
He served with you for 10 years.
Yes. It's wonderful.
But also, also you have guided us through some really difficult decisions and really hard times, and you have worked really in a creative way to accomplish some of the goals that we've had, doing lots of homework and lots of research. And it's been a joy to work with you.
100%. Well, to be continued. All right, so now we will take a small break. We have some treats over there. So enjoy, get to know our new folks, and appreciate our current. Thank you.
One, two, one, two, check. Okay. Oh, yeah, Lucas, do you want to come up?
We are starting again.
Yo, come sit here.
It's his first meeting, so.
Boy, that's so far from the truth. Welcome back, everyone. We are back in session and we will move on to item number three, approval of the amendment number one to the memorandum of understanding, development and management of tiny homes at four oh eight, four ten, North Montgomery Street.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thanks.
Just for the record, my name is Lucas Seibert. I'm the community development director here for the city of Ojai. The item you have before you tonight is, in fact, an approval of an amendment to the MOU that was brought before this body in 2024 and agreed upon. What they're looking for is the expiration date is set to expire at the end of this year. They're looking for a continuation of this MOU as a part of a project at four oh eight and four through four ten, North Montgomery Street, where they have, in fact, applied to the community development department and planning department for the design review phase of this project. It has not been deemed complete in terms of moving forward for workshops and commission and before this body for final consideration, but they have submitted and are moving forward in kind. So what they're asking for is, is basically an extension to December thirty first of 2028 and/or an execution of the ground lease for the subject property, which is at the corner of Franklin and Montgomery Street, north of Ojai. Vacant lot.
Questions for staff?
Yeah. So my, my first read was, my, my immediate reaction was, I want to get this project, like, going. So the three-year extension just seemed like a lot to me. So my question is, why do we need a three-year extension? And, you know, could we do like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty day extension of the existing agreement so that we can lock in some of those pieces that are going to be more permanent than an MOU?
So you're talking about, like, a check-in versus, so that, just to answer your first question, which is, the, to 2028 takes it to the, to the completion date versus, you know, getting permits or getting finals. It's, it's the completion date is what they're looking at. And they're really kind of following the, the format that they've submitted for grant recently, for the home, home grant, which basically they had to provide a timeline. That timeline itself puts it all the way out to 2028, which, if you look at the staff report, you see that, for instance, the first real milestone is breaking ground in April of this next year.
Can I reference that? That's page sixty-six or two of two in that packet.
Yep.
And Mr. Whitman, I, so with that, I was going to ask something very similar. So construction begins, at least according to this, April twenty twenty-six, and then the, the deadline for the final drawdown of home funds is the end of 2028.
Correct.
But that, when it says home sales complete by May twenty twenty-seven, that would satisfy your desire, it seems to me. Am I getting what you're asking right, Mr. Whitman?
Yeah, I mean, in, in general, but it, I guess my question was if, if we're, you know, breaking ground on construction in April, isn't that, by then, shouldn't we be looking at more permanent agreements than the MOU? And I'd...
Something coming before this body for a final consideration.
Right, so that we're, so we're getting locked into that, like, the lease document and maybe some additional documents that lock in what's going to happen. And, you know, one of my thoughts was that we've got, well, I don't, that's a discussion issue.
Okay.
So that, that's where I'm coming from. And I, I, like I said, it was my first read-through where I thought, oh, this is going way too slow. I, you know, got, got into it further and saw that, no, this, there is incremental progress throughout what's in, in the agreement and what's being proposed. But I would like to see us kind of, you know, move forward. And I'm, one of my thoughts about that, well, again, that's discussion, so.
Yeah.
I do have some more questions, but if any, if somebody else wants to jump in.
If I, if I could add, I think part of the reason for that later date is because they're still seeking grant funding. And so they haven't been awarded the home grant funding through the county yet, and so that would give them the space to pursue other grants if they were unsuccessful.
Right.
And the timeline that's being provided in the staff report is not in our agreement. It's something that they have provided to, for the home grant.
So is there a date when that would be accepted? Because it's federal funding, which, that's scary.
Yes. That is a really good question. Do you know offhand, Lucas?
I don't know offhand. Is there a representative? There is.
Wonderful. Come up. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Katie Norris. I'm with Habitat for Humanity, County.
I move the microphone closer down to you. Thanks.
There we go.
Wonderful. So here's your card.
Oh, okay, great.
Okay, thanks.
Well, let me just pull up some points here, but to answer your specific question, I, we, we have been in close, you know, collaboration with the county on the uncertainty around federal funding. I think at this time, they feel, you know, pretty confident that, that this is safe.
Okay.
Our expenditure deadline is the end of 2028. However, in order to enter into a contract with HUD, some things need to happen before May fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, one of which is a building permit. So we would absolutely accept, you know, a more permanent agreement, you know, ground lease or something like that, you know, as opposed to just extending the MOU for, for three years. We, I think I, we, we put in three years just to cover all of our bases for that federal funding.
What, have you, so I think this is a two-part question. Have you ever had in a, a time when the funding hasn't come through? And if the funding doesn't come through, what, what are our options after that?
To my knowledge, we have not experienced, you know, a loss of federal funding. If we don't receive this half a million that we, we are, you know, counting on for this project, we're still committed to the project, it may push the start date back. But we are doing everything we can. We're in the NEPA review process right now. We're trying to get all of those ducks in a row so that, you know, we could enter into that contract with HUD, or the county can enter into that contract with HUD.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is another part, the part to the question, too. If the funding doesn't come through, because there is so much uncertainty right now, so that's the reason why I'm extra interested in this, would, would, in order to expedite a project, would, would it ever be within the scope of, of what you all would do to rearrange the designs or look at a different plan, like tiny homes or manufactured, how, something along those lines?
Yes. So they are tiny homes as currently designed, but we would consider, you know, cost-saving a redesign or a cost-saving redesign.
And I'm hoping, I'm, my fingers are crossed that it won't happen, but I just wanted to get some clarity. Thank you.
My question for you, I guess, if I heard you right, you're saying you would happily accept something that's more stringent, but you, you're also, you're offering this or it's been proposed to offer this to give you the most flexibility, but is there an option that's more useful to you to further ensure funding?
In order to move forward with the contract with HUD, we need our NEPA review completed and our building permits. In order to, you know, move through all of those drawdowns of that funding, you know, that involves the home sales, so we need a ground lease. So really, a ground lease would, would be number one.
Yeah. So do you have a, a sense of, of whether the funding is going to come through?
I, I believe it is. Yeah.
And I, I guess this is more for our staff, and it kind of goes back to my original question. If, I mean, if, if we're moving down this road towards construction, which I'm happy, you know, that I discovered that is really where we're going, don't we need to have that ground lease in place in, as a starting point for beginning construction?
I agree. Yeah, so the, the ground lease was something I wasn't completely aware of, but it's something, something that certainly needs to kind of be in the forefront versus something you're seeing at the eleventh hour.
Okay.
So that's something we'll, we're certainly have a conversation with offline.
Okay.
I think the other thing to, to point out is, so this, this project just as a whole has been before this body, but it hasn't really had the chance to air out throughout the community. So they've already agreed to a workshop before going to planning commission, and typically with these types of projects, it's typically a two-planning commission meeting where there are, there's the opportunity for questions and then a, a decision or recommendation, and then it would become before this body. So we're looking at, you know, the first quarter, basically, for, for meetings to really kind of hash out or workshops, I guess you could say, to a certain degree, to kind of hash out this project and, and kind of provide it to the community. Not to say that the community hasn't come and spoke on this, but really, when we provide official notification within that three, five-hundred-foot radius, it's a different conversation once we get to a workshop and, and, and official public hearing.
Just to say what I think you said, you, there would be a, a public workshop and then there would be two planning commission meetings.
Yeah, I anticipate, with projects like this, it, it is on, and I've already talked to, to the, to Habitat about this. It only makes sense to have that first opportunity to kind of comment and not feel so rushed, and then the second meeting is responding to those questions with a determination.
No, thanks. Ms. Ruhl, did you have something?
Yeah. What is a deeper review? You just said a deeper review, or did you say deeper?
A NEPA review.
A NEPA?
Yeah. Because of the federal funding, we have to do a full NEPA review.
Yeah, or deeper. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So again, I have one more question. And I, I think this was at least partially answered, but if we start the project and the funding doesn't come through, then what happens next?
We are committed to completing the project. So whatever doesn't come through federally, we will pull from our general fund, you know, our, our donations, our restore proceeds, et cetera.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay? Yeah?
All there's, I've got so many, I have questions. I'm just curious, so for the last nineteen months, what has been going on? Because I haven't heard anything about anything, so it's, I don't know what you guys have been working on, just curiosity.
Organizationally or with this project?
With this project.
Um, I, our planning team isn't here, so I wish they could speak better to that. But I know that we just submitted, or we did a resubmital just now, or a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, it was in October.
Yeah.
So if you, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
So a couple of things. One is, we started the initial conversations after the MOU went through, I would say probably a couple weeks after that. Since then, we probably had in between four and five conversations, which then led to an application that was submitted, I believe, at the end of, at the beginning of 2025. And then we've had, we sent out revisions and then have just recently had resubmital in October. So over, and during that span between the first quarter of 2025 and October, there was conversations and regular meetings just to kind of understand the scope and, and the information that was being required of this project versus what they felt like they had the capacity to do. So it, it's just kind of getting familiar with our standards. Habitat then kind of figuring out how their, you know, based on their experiences and the information that they have, can, can bring something forward. And their design team has been very responsive up to this point, so.
More?
Well, I have questions, but it's into, you know, this, the fine paperwork, you know, likes, as far as, you know, median income and all of this stuff going through this, I don't know if now's the time to ask questions with that or if we should wait.
You're asking about how they're going to do the pricing based on the median income?
There's things in here, you know, with no HOA, who, who pays property tax? Who maintains the, you know, the driveways, the streets? All of those type of things are questions that I have, so I don't know if now's the time or if it's...
Yeah, go ahead.
You can ask the question, but I'm not necessarily sure that I'm going to be able to answer it. In terms of the affordable piece, that is a, that's a matrix that HCD comes out with every year, usually rolls out like around April or, or May.
It applies to the other projects that we have.
Yeah, and it's, it's consistent across the board with all the other projects. So if it's median income, it's following that, that basic standard in terms of median income qualification. So that thirty percent that you're, that you're looking at there is income qualifying. So in order for individuals to qualify for these projects, they have to show that their, their income isn't exceeding the thirty percent rule.
There's a similar project, oh, sorry, go ahead.
On a related point, we adopted about a year ago, an ordinance that prioritizes city residents and, and there's, you know, criteria and scale.
It's here still.
Thank you, Councilmember Ruhl, for getting that in front of us.
So we have this, we're looking for Ojai residents first, is the shorthand.
And that's applying across the board, that's not just with this project moving forward, there are projects that we currently have that are being built, that apply to it as well.
Yeah. I wasn't sure if it was specific, that ordinance was specific to rents. In this, in this case, we're looking at homeownership as the ultimate.
I would have to go back and look to see if it's, if it's only specific to rents versus rent and ownership. The ownership piece, if it's an own, like, I,
Well, we could condition this project on that, right?
Uh, looks like it's here, let me, let me find the reference right now.
I remember us talking about this, and, yeah, and they, uh, I'm sorry, I can't remember, Col- Colton, is it Colter?
This is Katie, Katie.
Okay, no, but who was the, who was the, Darcy, thank you.
Oh, yeah, Darcy.
My memory. But I, I remember him saying that their, that their model isn't, isn't to do, to do that, but that they would incorporate that into our plan.
Good, you have a better memory than me.
I'll tell you right now, um, 'cause I, I looked and I was, wanted to make sure that it was here. But it's the same model when you guys had the discussion about Cabrillo, it was the same one that's here.
Right, and, and just, um, we could sort of, in the parking lot, keep in mind that as we move forward, um, you know, what are the conditions where we can actually say that? Senate bill, I think it was something 68, may have spoken specifically to rents, but what is our, what powers do we have to extend that to either homeownership or what other, other types of models that we may be using for, for building, um, to see if that's a possibility?
Right.
When was the last time you received federal funding? I was curious.
Um, it was, uh, well, we receive federal funding annually through CDBG, um, from various cities and from the county of Ventura. Um, so we utilize that federal funding on an annual basis. Last time we received home funding, I believe, was in 2016, if I'm correct about that, um, for our Santa Paula project. Um, so it's been a while.
Anymore, I can go to public comment, if we're ready? Let me come forward, so they'll get to come to the podium, thank you very much, but stay close, we may need you again. Uh, first Anita Cram, then Bill Miley, and then Larry Stengel, please. Thank you, and that was on page 69, I appreciate you finding it, thanks.
Evening, everyone. So I'm gonna wear two hats tonight. First one, I'm gonna make a statement for the United Democrats of the Ojai Valley, known as U-D-O-V. So U-D-O-V recommends that the city proceed with the Habitat for Humanity project at 408 to 410 North Montgomery Street, and approve the amendment number one of the MOU between the city and Habitat. This project is an important step forward in securing homes for low-income community members of Ojai, and a model for the future of affordable housing that includes homeownership. So that's from our new Democratic club, and then I'm gonna switch to me as a community member. And, um, one thing that I would like to bring up is the comment about up to median income. I really hope we can hit the three low-income levels, because that's where the real need is, and the staff report does say up to median income. So our pressing need is in these lower-income brackets. Um, and I actually thought the timeline that was in the staff report was very ambitious. So the 2028, you know, date to me sounds much less ambitious in actually being able to complete the project, especially with what Lucas said about the four meetings that are gonna need to take place. So, so anyway, I think this is a good project, and I think it's really wonderful that this moves forward. Um, I'd also like to bring up one other thing that's kind of related, but a little bit separate, and that is, um, that it has been, it involves housing for low income, and that I would like to remind the city council that hopefully at some point they will address the vacancy tax that's been brought up many times, because the money that is, that could be collected from that could go into a housing fund. It could be set up that way, so I'd just like to remind that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bill Miley, please, and then Larry Stengel.
Hello.
Kaliv.
I hadn't intended to talk about the vacancy issue, but that would be really a good idea. I've known for years that about 300 or more of our houses are not occupied during the year fully. We have like 3,400 houses in Ojai, and the American Community Survey says that about 3,100 are occupied, and the rest aren't. So we should do something about that. This parcel has been considered for about five or six years now. Mayor John Johnson and I worked on it about five or six years ago. And a couple of years ago, I was at a meeting with the city manager where Habitat for Humanity got involved. They need time. It seems to me that, looking at one of the attachments, it says here, the project schedule is anticipated as follows. I know it's soft, but it says constructions start by April of 2026. How can that happen when they don't have the money yet? And they have two or three meetings that they're gonna have. It seems to me that it would be important to avoid making Habitat look bad, because they failed their part on this timeline schedule. This is, as was just mentioned, is a purchase project. First one has happened as, no, it's the second one that's happened in Ojai. And people who will be considered for ultimately buying the house, as I understand it, will also participate in the construction, which is really good. So, I'm concerned that they're not gonna have their money in order to be able to start construction by April, and that should be softened, or at least recognized. It seems that completing the project by April of 2027 is also very tight. This has been going on for five or six years for this parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Appreciate that. There is the sweat equity clause that's on page 69, which is I think Mr. Miley was referring to. Larry Stengel, please.
Good evening.
Hi.
Great project. Four units would be nice. Maybe they should think about subdividing the parcels, so each property will have its own tax ID number, and make it actually easier to transfer to different families beyond 99 years. That's a legal and real estate issue. They said they're $500,000 short. And they said if they had the $500,000, they could, they would reimburse the money out of donations and their factors. So why doesn't the city loan them the $500,000 now? They can start construction, and they can get it done. 'Cause we're gonna get the money back, they said they would get it from their source, 'cause if they built it without the 500. So, give them the 500, and say here, all they need is a permit. Correct? Whatever, I don't even know what a NEPA study is. Maybe it would be nice for them to say what it is. I just heard it, anyway. But seriously, um, what, that should be part of your discussion. Loan them the money. They said they're gonna pro- give it back to us, or give it back to whoever fronted it, or to their own sources, so they could start construction as soon as tomorrow, next week, next month, pull a permit. I mean, something. I'm just saying, move it forward, 'cause April 20th, that's six months, it's a year and a half, how, this thing's been going on for how long now? Four years? It's insane. Five. How long has the city taken the lot? I have no idea before me. Anyway, that's what I would do. At least have the discussion, have it here now, why don't we loan them the half a million, so they can start, because they're said they're gonna give it back. Okay. That's a note. So, front, front them the money and now make shovel happen.
Thank you, Mr. Stengel. Anybody online?
No raised hands, mayor.
Okay.
That brings up a, a good point, because we've talked many times about having a, um, a trust.
Yep.
And I'm wondering if there's some way like we could start the ball rolling now, in the event the money didn't come through, or if we wanted to partner, where we could, I think it would be a wonderful thing for the community, for us to have our hands in it. Community involvement, we could say, you know, here's what it's gonna be, have more say.
Yeah, well, I was gonna ask for that to be part of whatever motion that we do to have, um, city attorney come back to us, 'cause I don't think we can address it on this agenda item. But, yeah, two issues were raised, they're both, you know, very high on my priorities list. Um, one is the idea of a vacancy tax. So, you know, we really don't know what's possible right now, as far, you know, legally, and then number two, you know, would be that idea of a, of a housing fund or trust, and what's possible, viable, recommended, as far as that goes. But my inclination on the project itself is to extend the MOU for like five months, and have our attorneys work with, uh, Habitat for Humanity, and, um, see where we can, you know, kind of lock things up and, and, and move things forward. Uh, as opposed to just putting, you know, kind of a long tail at the end, I'd, I'd rather see us work more quickly on getting the initiation phase rolling.
I'm seeing the will be there, uh, at this table. The, I like, the, the housing trust is one of the goals, as you know.
Right.
And I was thinking, if, we wouldn't wait for this project to have that be done, 'cause that's gonna take a while, but it really sparks the need for it, absolutely, so it can be working in concert, for sure. Does that, so when you hear that proposal, Mr. Seibert, a shorter timeline, but, but you are, are taking the direction that we want to move this quickly and in a way that helps Habitat bring it along. Does that, does that sound reasonable to you?
Well, I can just tell you, the April deadline is, is extremely aggressive, so. Some of the...
We're hearing, we're hearing that be loose, in other words, that's, that's not part of the MOU that, that...
It is not, it is not, but it is a part of what they're, what they're looking to achieve from a financial standpoint. If there's a commitment, um, by this body and it's identified at a different meeting, to be discussed, uh, that potentially relieves some of that commitment, right?
I'm seeing us be committed here, and we haven't done that vote yet, but I'm seeing the heads.
I, I, I think the, um, you know, so the MOU is not as formal as a contract.
Right.
And, and there's, it's not as enforceable. But anytime you enter an MOU, it's, it's a, it's a statement of good faith that you want the project, uh, to go forward.
Right.
So, I'm fully in favor of, you know, continuing the MOU with the idea that we're really behind this. I'd like to have our new legal counsel look at the whole thing, 'cause it's gonna end up in their lap, uh, as to how this thing plays out, and come back. If we extended 150 days and have them come back to us within 120 days on recommendations about what we should do, that give them time to work with Habitat for Humanity for, you know, what they need, that, that would be my, uh, proposal. In fact, I'll, I'll make the motion that we, that we, um, tonight we extend the MOU an additional 150 days with direction to legal counsel to work with Habitat for Humanity, and come back to us within 120 days with recommendations about how to facilitate and accelerate the project moving forward.
I'll second that. Can I just ask about the timeframe?
That's what I was just gonna...
Well, is that, I'm, I'm see, I was trying to read your expression there. Now, if, if something can't move that fast, you could certainly bring it back here again to us, and we can address it.
Extend it again.
Do you want it just to go out longer right now?
I, well, I, the three years is, is, is a little bit, it's like, hey, here's the end, and then it's like, what's going on in the middle? You know, trust us, right? The MOU is providing those guidelines. I, I think, if I could just offer one slight suggestion, and that is 180 days, and then a check-in at 150. I think, I think both of those pieces puts us beyond the April looming date, and then provides, I think, staff and Habitat the opportunity to work through those, those workshops, and it really kind of gives the breadth the planning commission's gonna want, and then obviously you as a body, and then working through some of the pieces you had talked about in the beginning, that this body had talked about in the beginning, and...
I'll accept your friendly amendment.
I'll, I'll second that. No, no, no. It, you just, you added a month, and so, 180 and 150.
And then, but then I also wanted to, independent of this, I would like to give direction to a city attorney, uh, to come back with us on reports on vacancy tax and, um,
A building trust.
A building fund.
Or building fund, yeah.
I, I know we don't wanna have discussion about this, but as far as the vacancy tax goes, um, I know you know that San Francisco is in litigation on the vacancy tax, but I've mentioned before what Vermont did was a second home tax. And if you, it, it was very easy to find out if your home was a second home or not, because your tax returns will tell you that. And so Vermont taxed second homes, whether or not they were occupied. They taxed them at a different tax rate than they taxed first homes.
So the direction, yeah.
I don't, I don't wanna get...
Yeah, so I'm just saying.
But what I will do is make sure, well, it's, it's not me.
So I'll, I'll...
I will, I will communicate to Bethany, and she'll have access to this meeting, uh, and I will flag the Vermont issue and note some of the things that have been discussed today, and I'm sure she'll watch the meeting.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to amend the motion so that it says vacancy tax, second, uh, residence tax, or similar to, you know, address that issue that we do have a high percentage of.
Alternative housing taxes.
Yeah.
Ordinances, something like that. Are you okay with that? Okay. Do you wanna read it back to us, Mr. Montgomery, to make sure?
Of course.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion by Councilmember Whitman, with a second by Mayor Gilman, to extend the MOU an additional 180 days, and, um, have legal counsel work with Habitat for Humanity, and return in 150 days with a formal report from staff as a check-in.
I believe, return within 150 days on the facilitating or accelerating having the housing built. And then there's additional direction to the city's attorney's office, to provide advice regarding a vacancy slash alternative housing slash resident tax.
On the same motion.
On the same motion, and...
A building fund.
A building fund.
Thanks.
Understood.
That's okay, it's all, it's same, it's thematic.
Ready for roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lee.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Super. Thanks for being here. Yes, very cool. Okay, moving on to number four, community development department contracted position, project compliance coordinator. Mr. Seibert, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, okay.
Wait, is that number four? Five?
Uh, five.
Oh.
Sorry.
Wait, okay.
Well, 2B was actually three.
Oh.
And so now, yeah, five is right.
No, our, mine says, um, we had 2A and 2B, we just did three. And now, my, my calendar says four. But whatever, man, as long as we know what we're talking about.
Mr. City Clerk, what item are we on?
We are on item four, community development department contracted position.
Position, project.
Oh. Okay.
Tabs are incorrect.
No problem. Great, good thing we're like, we're like a well-oiled machine, man, no toleration.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, good evening once again, you know my name, you know my title, I'm not gonna say it again, but what is interesting about this proposal brought forward is... what is interesting about this proposal brought forward is this is a contractor position. We have a contractor already with Willdan um which provides services for engineering, uh building and co-compliance. So all three of those. So the majority of what we have going on uh with community development is being handled from the professional side uh by Willdan. We have obviously professional staff on on site and uh under uh as full-time employees, basically. Here, what we're looking for is, and we've identified and see a need for uh basically a contract planner to do compliance checks regarding uh conditions of approval. And that is either projects that have been recently approved, are currently in operation through CUPs or other uh land use uh regulated um provisions. And it's basically going out, making sure that they're doing the things that they have been conditionally obligated to do, whether that's during construction or post-construction. Um, they've agreed to it. These these projects understand the roles and responsibilities as developers. And we're making sure that that's being followed through through the contractors that are doing the work or even the management companies that are managing the projects after completion. There's been kind of an uh an ongoing uh understanding regarding some of the projects that we've seen moving forward. But more importantly, with some of the projects that are are going on right now and future projects that we anticipate, and this is either affordable housing or commercial um level projects. All of those are likely to have conditions of approval that are gonna need to be monitored beyond the lifespan of the project's completion. So this contract planner is already doing the work. He actually started a little over a month ago in October and we've seen some great strides with this individual. He's really here right now, three days a week. He bookends it Monday and Friday and then is here on Thursday. He actually has another contract through Willdan where he works for um for LA County as well. So he fills in the gaps Tuesdays and Wednesdays with another jurisdiction, um but then is with us three days a week. So what we're looking for is is basically an amendment to the Willdan contract um which went forward before this body was approved as a part of the budget. So this is beyond um the scope. There was no planning services that were included. And I should just give a little bit of of history with Willdan from a planning standpoint. We have used their services in the past for contract planners. Uh certainly during the pandemic, we needed some uh off and on contract services and and use them uh kind of sparingly, but definitely use them during that timeframe and found some success. Here, having uh and it's in the staff report, Eduardo here uh has been wonderful. He is driving from a hundred miles away. So a lot when he's coming in on Thursdays, he's staying Thursday night in a hotel and then here again on Friday.
You ready for some questions?
Sure.
I uh when I see on page one eleven of the of the full report or two of two, I the the comparison between the employee, which you guys included, you probably anticipated the question. The full-time position at ninety seven thousand, let's say, is the approximation and then the contract, they're not very far apart. So I guess the question would be something like, um, I certainly see the value of a contractor, meaning you don't need the services anymore and you don't, there's no obligation. I get that. Do you anticipate at some point or that if you if we continue to need the service and we value the expertise of somebody that had that longevity, the employee might make at some point, an employee might make more sense. Does that seem, what what's your thoughts?
I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
Um, here's here's if with a with a Willdan employee, we can bring them on immediately as a contract service. If we were to fly the position, you're looking at several months, interviews.
Um, and if I could just jump in, you can have your cake and eat it too if you want. There's nothing that says you couldn't continue the contract while you recruit for the position. You could certainly do that.
The one consideration that you always have when you make a full-time position is, you know, it's gonna be a personable position which increases the city's footprint, but this would be a likely, highly likely a pepper position. Meaning not the classic purse position, so the footprint is much, much smaller.
Okay.
But that's entirely possible and I'm gonna look at Ms. Holman and see if I said anything incorrectly. Nope, she's gonna agree with it. Okay, thank you.
I mean, you point that out in that last paragraph. You say there's a timing difference if it's either or.
Yeah.
You've been clear about that.
But I guess I'm saying that
You said both.
You don't even you don't even really
Yeah.
You could keep, so the thought is Eduardo, let's say you decided to go the route of going in-house. Encourage him to compete in the process. We just, of course, would have to open up the process because that's our practice and policy.
Sure.
Right? And he may not be successful, but he may.
Plus with the salary, it's fiscal year, so it's that makes a bit, you know.
Why are you saying that's even more of an argument about how close they are? Or what do you mean by that?
Yeah. Just, you know. I just have, you know, I've I've been saying this for a long time and it seems like I never, you know, it's not heard or whatever, but this brought like all of the issues that I've had for, you know, the the year that I've been on um the council. You know, um I think it was Mr. Whitman that seconded it, like checking out what is it, hiring an employee versus, you know, the cost of um, you know, contracting out. We wanted to study, you know, some kind of information on that, which I still haven't, you know, seen it. I don't see it on the agenda or anything, which it's something that I would like to see. Um, you know, the budget, we haven't seen the budget too and, you know, ninety you know, what is it, whatever the the amount for that. And then the other issue that I have is that he was hired before it was even approved. So you know, it seems like the cart before the horse, like if you want to get somebody
Sure. Let me just jump in a couple things because I think that um not to quibble with you, but we do have your item on the list on the working agenda. So it is tracked. We didn't. We didn't lose track of the request for a comprehensive contract study. What you have, you know, and I'm not gonna argue against myself here, but you know, with when you when you hire on a full-time city employee, there's some property rights that those individuals have in their job. And so you you take that on as well. And sometimes employees work out and sometimes they don't work out. And there are there are pros and cons to that. So you just have to be mindful of that. I'm totally fine with continuing the contract or moving forward with the contract, flying the position, doing a recruitment, seeing, you know, if Eduardo wants to compete, seeing how he does and going that route. We will. We will come forward in twenty six, as we've indicated on the working agenda, with a comprehensive look at, you know, what the city is spending versus contracting versus going in-house.
So um can we want to approve this contract so that we're starting up, you know, right away with this position or actually we're continuing the position? It's already started. But then also, um, you know, specific to this position. I know you're doing a general project, but specific to this position. Before I say, hey, I wanna uh, you know, start a recruitment for the position, I want to hear if that's the advice on whether for that's the right way to go. The economic uh from both HR and our director and our city manager.
You're gonna have to because you've authorized the number of positions. And you'd have to, I don't know from immediately looking at our salary schedule if I have a position. And I don't know if I have a position on the salary schedule. I probably don't. I'd need to do some market study and come up with a range. So and you would have to authorize all of that.
Right.
And so when I came back with that, if you gave me that direction, absolutely, we could go through.
So develop a description of the position of that full-time employee.
Yep.
Uh, get get what the benefits would, get to do a comparison between contracting versus hiring and then and then decide if we're gonna recruit for that position or not at some later date.
Sounds good.
That's what I'm thinking.
Or you could provide direction in that meeting if you wanted to. Tell us to go out and do that recruitment.
Right.
Absolutely.
Thank you for showing us that we can engage in this contract and not stop the service and then engage in this.
And sorry, you know, it's not really this either or. As as you started the discussion, I realized you can do it all.
And then I just have one other question. Um, with, you know, hiring Eduardo, whose position is is there somebody in your department that should be going out and making sure that they're following rules? Because I think the date we I I'm pretty sure I know when this came into play.
Yes. There were things hap- Yeah, so there were things happening before that date. Um, and bringing him on was, it took a little bit longer than anticipated. So it was brought on specifically for one specific piece, but it's interesting when when I interviewed Eduardo and I asked all the standard questions just to kind of get the feeler, I sensed something more from him. And as he's come on in this short time, I see more than just the the compliance piece. I see him filling um some gaps that we have currently going on right now. Plant planning, planning, building and co-compliance have some interesting things going on. I would say each piece has has one, some very interesting things going on uh at different varying levels. He can help fill in those those gaps beyond just planning. I also see him potentially having a role uh to a certain degree regarding co-compliance as well on some of the things that are going on. Especially leaning into kind of a proactive uh engagement.
So in prior projects in town, was there somebody from planning that would go out to make sure that the mound of dirt was covered, that all of the things that they were supposed to do?
Were the conditions of approval being met?
Exactly. Whose duty was that?
And what's interesting is since he's gone out and done done it for specific projects, he's coming back with a fresh pair of eyes saying, look, I've looked at all of these conditions. I know you have as well. Here's what I'm seeing, boots on the street. And then we start working through what those conditions actually mean.
But I'm gonna interject. I'm sorry. I think the question is a little bit different. Yes, there was some bodies doing this before. It's never been there. It hasn't been addressed, but this is a dedicated person versus multiple people maybe doing the same task or the director having to fill in. It it was much, much more of a division of of labor. This is allowing somebody to be more focused on the assignment.
Yep.
Is that I think that's more the question you were asking, Councilmember. Is that correct?
Somewhat, yeah, I just.
So we so we didn't have the specific position.
Right.
But we had people performing those functions.
So you have a building inspector, you have a code enforcement officer, you have you have, you know, planners, you've, you know, and all of them are qualified to to do that type of work, but was one person necessarily dedicated to that? No.
No, but that's what I'm trying to say. Like if there was four people from planning and that was their duty, how come some of the issues with the project got through four people and one person comes in and all of a sudden here's all the things that people have been saying are not happening?
Well, because of just what you're illustrating, because exactly what you're getting at, which is, you know, if you're able to focus more on something, uh, you know, that's 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 what you see.
You're not satisfied with the answer?
No.
And then uh I guess a follow-up question on that is you know, in the city's history, you know, was this a position that, you know, went away for whatever reason or this is
No.
needs been recognized and and we're creating a
Yeah, it's it's kind of an opportunist opportunistic um fill filling an opportunistic uh piece to this puzzle. Here's what typically happens with with planners when they have a dedicated project. Once that project is in their hands and they see it through the design phase and the building phase, because they also do the plan check piece um to ensure that the that the building plans are consistent with um with the design review that went before various bodies. Uh, beyond that, there are cities that use building or co-compliance, um larger cities typically, to ensure conditions of approval compliance. There are smaller to mid-range cities that tend to use that same planner that already has a caseload that's probably overfilling to ensure that those conditions are being met. Typically, when that happens and you have a planner dedicated to that, they're not looking on a daily basis. They're they're typically reactionary. Here, this is actually going out and ensuring that while either projects are ongoing through construction or post-construction, because there are projects that he's uh working towards managing. We've already started that process uh that are beyond the scope of the CFO. So they've already they've already seen their CFO and they're in operation and we're still meeting with them to ensure that they're in compliance moving forward.
Okay. Uh, let me just pause here for a second. I don't have any public comment cards on this item. Is there anything online?
No, Mayor, we no longer have any attendance on Zoom.
Wow.
So
Yes, please, Ms. Rule.
Yeah, so what I'm what I'm understanding um is that we have at as a body, we have asked for more code compliance. Um, not only, you know, parking code compliance, but code compliance.
Reach it out.
Yeah, across the board of, you know, we have, we have rules, you know, that need to be followed. And we have, we have spoken often about how um the arcade, for instance, is is kind of getting out of control, the code, that, you know, the design guidelines, which are codes are are not being followed. Um, and so I see that, I see, you know, sort of a snowball effect as well as we're having more development and building than we've ever had before because of the requirements of the state and, you know, just what we have approved. Um, that has become, you know, uh they it it needs to have a a steady pair of eyes on it who can really gauge what was yesterday or what was last week and what is now. Um, and I think that before, as I understand it, it was piecemealed because of the way the the system was. Systemically, it was owned by someone, you know, who was a planner or who was a builder, but now it's that that compliance is gonna be owned by a compliance officer. I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, and uh I like the idea of someone, you know, the the institutional knowledge, even though it only may be for months, they've they've institutionally seen what has been occurring. Um, so this makes sense to me. It seems to me that, you know, when you do a gap analysis, this is what we don't have and this is what we do need. Um, we've heard from the public that we need this. We've heard from the HPC that we need this. Um, so I am in support of this for those reasons. Um, and we need to do more code compliance as we move forward around uh the building that we will be doing.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Can I just jump in really quick? Sorry.
Go ahead.
Just up in here really quick.
Go ahead.
The other thing that should be said, and I don't think Mr. Seibert or I have mentioned this, is we have policy direction to do this and I don't know that that was as explicit in the past. I in in fact, I think it might have been the other way where there wasn't an interest in it, but this council has definitely said, we want this to happen. And that's the other big change this happened.
Uh, so I'm just gonna um expand on what Councilmember Rule said. And that is that, you know, there's other communities where the culture is, if you're going to do a project, you better go look at the rules first. Because uh and I think that there's a certain extent, you know, an attitude in OHI where you do it and ask for forgiveness after you've done it. And and I don't, I don't like, so this goes back to my being on planning like twenty years ago. I hated the idea that there was a that we had rules set out and that some people weren't complying with them and then given forgiveness. What does that say to the people who bothered to look at the rules? And and bothered to do a project that fits what the rules say.
For sure.
And and we should be uh you know, we should be embracing that and trying to create a little bit of a culture change in the community that read the rules before you start a project.
I think this goes in that direction. That's well said.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I I I agree with that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So one other thing, too, I just wanted to throw in the to the mix is that I think it's really fitting that we have this whole list of master fees and and um and uh penalties if people don't comply with codes. Uh, so I think this this Eduardo or or whomever it is is going to pay for their for themselves uh because there are fees associated with with breaking the rules. Um, and not that we, you know, not that I'm I'm a punitive person, but there, but I I think that um that that the the biggest concern I have is that so many of our community members have have come up to me personally and come up to others of you as well and said we need, you know, there are codes that are being violated and it's not fair and and, you know, we have these codes for a reason. So I'm in I'm in support of this.
Well, I'd like to make a motion. Um, what I'm hearing is to accept the project compliance coordinator position as a contract planning technician while also um authorizing the the staff to do the research on a permanent position to fill this vacancy to come back to council for review.
Great. I'll second it.
Okay.
I second that.
You you're thirty in. Okay.
I thirded it.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Thanks.
Understood.
Okay.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Super good. Um moving on to number five. Concept review proposed climate resilience and fire preparedness education partnership with Nordoff High School.
Uh yes, Mayor, uh this is actually going to be a presentation you're going to hear this evening from uh your colleagues. This is from councilmembers uh. Rule and Mang. I do know that we also have uh Ms. Cohen, I believe, is in the, there she is.
Okay.
In in the audience, and I think that Councilmember Rule might want her to come to the podium as part of the the effort.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
And so with that, I'm going to hand things over to the two of you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Um so this is essentially a a grant proposal that would come under um, you know, fire hardening and climate resilience. We would be engaging with the, with Nordoff High School um with their uh ag science uh cohort. And um, you know, rough, just, just broad strokes, essentially what we're planning to do. Is engage what I consider to be a virtuous sort of cycle circle whereby we will fund. Um the school to provide us with native plants and a build out of their greenhouse and of their ag science. Department and in return, they will provide us with native plants, with work in the city. Um and, you know, training and uh. Ms. Cohen can speak more to that. And in, we've already spoken with the um green, the Green Coalition, they will be taking those plants and planting them on. In the city hall campus for the uh, you know, for the master plan here and other city public works. Projects as well, potentially um, you know, the, what we're calling the, well, we'll call it the Cabin Village, but we're calling it um. Uh the Van Light Village.
Or the project formerly known.
The formerly known, that's right. So um and I think that those are the broad strokes. The specifics are, you know, in the actual um proposal. Which we all worked on together. Uh and this was four or five months ago, so there is potential for it to uh morph. And uh grow and change. And I think that Ms. Cohen can speak to that. Um we did hear today and I think that Ms. Mang is particularly. Interested in involving uh special needs or, you know, otherwise unrepresented um populations in 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 this process. So with that, I mean, that's the general idea. In the end, it can grow as large as we want it to grow. Providing potentially having, you know, nursery facilities where we're growing native trees and planting. Um and you can see the specifics here where, you know, we're using the students as our community outreach to do, to learn fire hardening, to do fire hardening at their homes. Get some kind of service uh, you know, service um. Acknowledgment and or certification and then being able to go out into the community once they become um, you know, experienced at this. So uh I will let Ms. Cohen speak to it and certainly if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or Ms. Cohen can. And I will just also want to throw it to Councilmember Lang, who was able to um. Uh involve Gold Coast uh in certain things. So we can, we can talk about that after um the transportation element. So. Thank you.
That was very well covered. Thank you and thank you for having me and thank you for considering this proposal to include our students. Um one thing I have done in the past is include our special education classroom, not the, you know, general ed that are mixed, but. Sometimes I do take them when we go to Poco Farm. So that is a really great idea and I love that idea. I think that would be really cool. Um so kind of. Expanding the nursery, we already have thousands of plants, over forty species at Nordoff at our nu- native plant nursery. It would be really nice to increase the shade so we can have more tables, so more industry tables that um allow those plants to grow. Um replacing our greenhouse, we like literally tape them together every year and there's holes and they're from, you know, fifteen years ago and they're Home Depot kits. Um so replacing that, getting more uh shade and we could, more tables to increase production and. Also, if there's specific plants or trees that are of interest that are something that we can do that's viable, we can increase those. Numbers of what specifically is is being looked at. Um home hardening assessments would be really exciting for my students. I'm working with the Fire Safety Council. Um grazing West uh school, the Shepherdess of Upper Ojai. Um and. One thing that has changed, I've really looked into the certifications because I find that very important, learn from the professionals. And then my students really apply that and learn more while applying that and teaching others in this career development experience. Um but the certifications, I would like to be more local. So I wrote like ISIV. Um that, I looked into this uh. Ecology and Wild Bi- Wildland uh curriculum and it was really just curriculum and it wasn't even like. Specific to our local ecosystem, which is very important. And I mean, how many ecosystems are like this? I mean, I know, like, maybe somewhere else in the world you can find something, but. Proper fire mitigation has to be specific to where we live. I grew up in the Sierra Nevada Mountains, which is very different in how you handle it. Um so grazing, um agroforestry and that regenerative process as well as watershed uh. Like techniques to use that to our advantage and all the things with the plants that we're choosing. So everything would be. Working with Momma Tree Farms for these certifications in regenerative agriculture, so very much more local and not anything online. And the Shepherdess in Upper Ojai with the grazing. Um and then just professionals in my classroom. So fire. Um, you know, firemen or people that have this kind of ecological uh professional background to come. Teach our students, get those skills and apply it to our community, um drive them around in vans for these small projects. Um possibly field trips in um getting all of my ninety students out there to see our community, to see what we have to. Have that teachable moment so that we can have more numbers involved rather than just vans going as well in addition. Internships, all of this would be kind of the hopes and dreams of. The funding would really solidify and connect the dots between my students and industry, which not only helps our community in the long run. Um with the projects that they're going to be doing, but also strengthens my own students' confidence and skills in order to be ready for the world come.
Um I will just um mention, I I didn't mention it, but um the Ojai, the uh Green Coalition is bought in. They've gotten the proposal. They're thinking about, you know, the ways in which they can participate and have discussed with PACS. Environmental, which I know that you are already connected to, the ways in which they can mentor the students as well and help them. You know, as understanding the native biology and the biome that that we live in. So. Um we will be expanding that as well. We're just putting these pieces together now. Um so that's the idea behind this and um I'm hoping that my fellow council members can see. The immense value of um this proposal and building out. The Nordoff capabilities here for our, for our students and for our community. It's, it's a win-win-win as I see it.
You ready for some questions?
Uh yes, sure. Um I, sure, yeah.
Okay. The the two questions, I I have two. One is, if I look at page one twenty-five, that's the detailed budget breakdown. If I look at the transportation row. The difference between the enhanced and the comprehensive, the thirty thousand, what is that transportation difference?
Glad you could ask that. I'm gonna throw this at this.
Okay.
Who uh can speak to that as well as Ms. Cohen.
Thanks.
Thank you. So we uh, so one of the things, Councilmember Rule uh was, when, when she was ta- talking to me about. Uh about transportation, just in a separate conversation, I said, oh. Uh the Gold Coast is transferring some of our, our fleet, our smaller shuttles. And um and a conversation came up in our, in our uh meeting. Uh to, instead of selling them for parts and any that can be used and still have life in them and that are safe. And have run through tests uh that we would donate them. And so I've reached out to uh Vanessa Russianberger uh about this and in eight or nine months. We will, will know for sure if we have one that um that could be donated, but. It's likely that there will be, that that will be something that we could, that the city could facilitate on behalf of OUSD.
And if Ms. Cohen, if you could speak to the need for transportation and why that was sort of put in there.
Yeah, so um getting my students out there would be amazing. Um so internships, I could take students after school. We could have environmental steward. Types of projects, uh communities with Prue, with PACS, with the Green Coalition. Um career development experiences. So my students, they're really getting involved in the nursery and actually compete in FFA. With nursery, landscape and operations. So um just honing in those career development experiences. Um and then in FFA world, um I would be using it for leadership development in addition to all of the things that we're talking about here. Let's go to Shelf Road and do those home hardening assessments with some students. Um so that would be the need of the transportation and um. And at our school, like, my department isn't, I have to always kind of be last in line and get it when the sports aren't taking it, which. There's a high demand for transportation for all of us.
I'm sure there is.
And, yeah, I just was gonna follow up. I I'd spoken to uh the city manager about potentially the recreation vehicles. Being the gap analysis, being at the gap um providing gap uh transportation. Between when we find out um about Gold Coast and uh, you know, we have. Uh those vans for the recreation department that are used, heavily used in the summer, but um there are. That is a possibility, a good potential. Um so the city manager can also speak to that. Um while we wait to see if indeed. You know, we should be funding transportation. I think we understand the need to have that available. But if we can get it from Gold Coast or borrow from the recreation department in the interim, that would be great.
No, thanks. My second question is, um has the, either Nordoff or the district leadership been involved in this, in this project? Or do they know about what you're proposing tonight and they're clear on what being asked for?
I did speak to Kim Hoy, who is here, I think, last week, also on behalf of the CD department, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
But anybody above Kim?
Um, no.
Okay.
Um honestly, I, you know, wrote this five months ago in the summer and if I knew it was gonna come to fruition, I could have had that conversation and will.
Okay.
Definitely.
And I will say that this was sent to both Cheryl Knox, who who distributed it to the trustees. Um as part of a discussion on the two-to-two. We, we made a proposal for this being our sort of flagship project and then we would move into. Uh other curriculum, um, you know, uh uh ideas around internship and, you know, uh. Putting students on the various commissions. So those were our two proposals that we sent to Cheryl Knox, who put them on the trustees' agenda. How that actually played out, I don't know, but they all have been alerted to it. And I've also spoken. You know, just in a side way to both Atticus Reyes and really Kathy Smith, just down, you know, she's going down the hallway. I'm like. We do, you know, so um I haven't had in-depth discussions, but I know that they've gotten the proposal and um. I've, I've, we did an ex, uh, you know, an explanatory page as to to what we were thinking.
And I will say that's one of my concerns is, you know, I watch the school board meetings and they don't seem to be a fan of an ad hoc. So um I don't know what happens if they don't, if the school district says no to the ad hoc. Is it something, can we continue with working with you and the students?
Uh can you please define?
That seems like a different question than what we're, what's in front of us.
Saying, you know, with this to go ahead and work with you. Okay, so and it's saying here, picking the two people for the ad hoc committee.
Oh, I see.
Watching the school board meetings.
Gotcha.
They don't seem like they're a fan of that. They feel that you, you know, Ms. Knox is doing a great job, which I'm not saying anything about that, you know, doing what needs to be done with curriculum and all of that. Like, we're good. So in the event the, the trustees say, well, like, no, then what would happen? You know, would this project just go stop because you wouldn't have the support of us to help? What would happen?
No, definitely not. Um in career technical education, there are, uh, there's more funding um than general funding. So um for example, ten thousand dollars for the whole year, I'm spending on like leadership and transportation for my students. And then for the Ag Incentive Grant, another one. So that was um C-TIG that we get every year and every year it kind of changes depending on what has been passed and accepted. Um and then the Ag Incentive Grant, I'm getting um like five thousand dollars possibly in January and that goes towards equipment, towards building our barn. Um we started with nothing. We had seven pigs last year at eighteen, so we have a lot of students doing it for the first time, getting involved. Um I do know that Atticus Reyes is a big support. Uh he actually connected me with Momma Tree Farms and he's the one that put us together. And I know that he would be very participatory in this. Kathy Smith always shows up um to like the admin, admin night nights. Um. She's at my barn when we have those open houses. Um. Uh Mr. Halverson, Dr. Halverson, always says really good things about what I'm doing in my program and is very supportive. Um I, I honestly don't see this not having that support because this is meaning and purpose and. Like real career readiness, those skills that really make a difference, but also. Attract our students to our school and increase our attendance because they want to come to my classroom. They want to go on that field trip. They want to do something that is applied science that really gives them like meaning and and that's what I'm here for.
Now, let me just, if I can, just one quick question. Um I'm just trying to understand the recommendation, just, just so we don't get into the weeds so much, but we're saying. I'm just reading the recommendation. Consider this potential educational partnership between the city and Nordoff in this ag science program and. One is appointing two councilmembers to serve on an ad hoc, which you just brought up. The other is provide direction to what level of funding to negotiate and then direct the staff. So. We're not, we're not literally talking about the nuts and bolts of the program yet.
Right.
That's, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, I think, I, I think what we're looking at is a more generalized um. Like I've been the recipient of many grants, you know, in education. And they're not. They're not as detailed as a professional service agreement, you know. Basically, it's a grant. Because everyone understands, you know, what you're gonna kind of do with this. Um and so, so I look at it in a much, I, I don't look at it as something that is a. You know, a deeply in-the-weeds contract. I look at it like we are, what we have in this grant. To me would suffice for, for detail, right? I mean, you know, potentially, we could, you know, we could, we could. Sort of um uh. Get more detail, but we have numbers, you know, we have, we have timelines, we have amounts. Um and all of this comes from, you know, it, it, these weren't just made up numbers. These were things that, that were thought through. So. What I don't want to do, this is a concept review so that everyone can wrap their head around what the idea behind it is. And we hoped that with enough detail here, we could move this forward in a real way. It has been on the, the burner. You know, the back burner for four to five months. So um. So that, that's, you know, I'm, I'm happy to provide or to speak in any way that we think. I think that what we're really looking for. Is a yes. And then are we talking about essential, enhanced or comprehensive? And if we're talking about comprehensive. You know, do we want to leave in the van transportation or do we want to provide that through the city? And uh with the idea of Gold Coast coming.
Thank you, please.
And I want to say, just for clarification, Gold Coast would be a donation to the city. So we would not be buying that. These are old vans and, and, and we have to make sure that there, that we have some that can be donated. And so that could be like an in-kind donation or something along those lines. We wouldn't be paying. If, if that, that's not a part of this total amount. That would be from them.
Because I am seeing, if, if, for example, if we were to take the middle road here. Minus the thirty thousand, that's essentially the middle road, minus the van.
Right, or it could be, you know, the, the first option, twenty-two thousand with. The in-kind donation of the van, which is valued at, you know, several hundred thousand. And then the total amount. Wouldn't be a cash amount. It would be, you know, cash and in-kind, or it could just be the in-kind. Um but that's, there's a, there are a number of unknowns about that right now.
Okay.
Also, I do want to say too that, that there are other resources as well. There's a new company that is headquartered in uh here in Ojai. And uh, and I met the owner Angela through the Chamber and they are looking for organizations to partner with. That they, she recycles sails from sailboats and has created all of these shade structures from these sails. And so, and so I think there, you know, part of, I'm thinking part of any collaboration we have would be connecting you also to resources. we have would be connecting you also to resources that, you know, you mentioned that that was one of your needs. Well, they would be a great collaborator to, to work with, and maybe that could cut down some of the needed expenses as well. So Carla would be a great one to, to connect with at the Chamber.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, please.
Yeah. So I heard the part about providing native plants to City Hall campus and the, you know, Van Light Village?
That's our, the working title.
Cabin Village or Van Light Village. But there's also a component in here about students working on what I would understand to be residential properties related to assessing fire hardening issues. And so would that be city residents, or would it be the whole county area?
I, I think we would be focusing here in the Ojai Valley, specifically, upper Ojai, down to Ofio kind of thing. It's just easier to manage and do in our time. If we are successful here, we can always grow, but I always like to start small where we can actually make it work and make it useful and implement it correctly, and then kind of grow from there. So even when we do our own native planting landscapes, we kind of start with what we know will survive and we grow from there. We don't just go big at first.
You're saying just, you're saying valley-wide, not just in the city of Ojai, but in the Ojai Valley?
Valley, yes, in the valley.
Basically, your students, I mean, the unified school district, right?
The Fire Safe Council, you've also contracted with them to do fire hardening efforts, so I wonder if there's an opportunity.
You anticipated another one.
So I, I wonder if there's an opportunity, if I may suggest, for a collaboration where the students could be doing it with an adult.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I, I think that's, yeah, that's the idea, for sure.
I would have concerns about sending kids onto residential property.
Oh, I would be there every time, so it would be.
But I, what I was gonna suggest along the lines of what City Attorney Taylor has suggested is that if it was, if we've already contracted with Fire Safe Council to do that type of a program, maybe there would be a way to do a volunteer student getting credit for time, like an internship type of a thing through the Fire Safe Council so that they're handling all of that, and it's not the school district's problem and it's not the city's problem if something goes poorly there.
And I'm happy to reach out to Randy and/or William, the, the board there, and speak to them about that. I have, I have no doubt that they, that that is, you know, part of what they're thinking anyway, because they work with the crew, which is, you know, the, the age range is a little bit larger and, you know, the, the geography is greater, but they do that with the crew members. So, you know, I, I'm sure that they would, would be, would buy into that.
Yes, and if I may, the access is really what I am the difference. You know, not very many Nordoff public school students are in the Green Coalition, are going to PACS, but I'm the link that will be driving them and making sure that all of those students, even our disabled students that might not have that transportation, or the students that can't get to the internship by car, by parent. I'm, I'm that link that's putting that connection together.
So I have one final question, and that is with the majority of the properties that would be involved in that, that home hardening assessment component, has there been any effort to go to the county and have the, and see if the county has any interest in participating in this program?
Um, I've only spoken to industry partners in, in this realm. I, I have had residents, like, like, parents at our school already tell me, oh, if you do that, I'm, I'm on your list, I want to be there first. But I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking the county administration, like Matt Laverre is the supervisor for our district, and, and I don't know what departments or programs might be involved, but I think it'd be a good idea to go to them and see to what extent they might be supportive of this program and provide some of the funding.
I, I love that idea. And again, like, the timeline here, if, if we go forward with getting my students involved in this project and doing the things that are on those deliverables, we start small, we build big. This doesn't have to be, you know, start and end this year, in our five-term, five-year goal and our 10-year goal. So those are kind of steps, but starting small, I think, is where we're at right now.
Can I ask you about the plants too, just to follow up on your point, which was, when you say that you'll provide plants, do you mean for purchase or, oh, so on the city properties that you're talking about, that the, what you're growing there will come here as part of an arrangement between?
So we already sell our plants at $5 each across the board so that we have that access that anybody can have as many plants as they want. So if you guys helped us increase our production, we would just give you thousands of plants.
Mm-hmm. That wasn't clear from the proposal, but thank you for clarifying that.
No, I, I lied, I have one more question. Oh, I forgot what that was, never mind.
And, and just, I, I'm happy to, I have a couple of things on my list to speak to Supervisor Laverre about parks and recs type of things, native planting. I'm happy to bring Annalise into a discussion, I mean, Ms. Cohen into a discussion with Matt about this and see if there is something that the county can provide. You know, it is, it is the Ojai Valley School District. I mean, so I, I'm happy to do that as well and see.
Oh, I do remember my question. Is there a deadline? Is there a deadline by which you need to have some type of commitment from the city, or is this just like concept and evolving thing where you're looking at the more long-term? Not a, like, an immediate deadline or?
So no deadline. I'm very flexible, that's, I'm a very adaptive teacher, and this is something that we're already doing, that we just want to make more meaningful, more purpose, a little bit bigger, a little bit more, you know, industry partner-related to really get my students those skills.
Thank you. Let me take our two public comments that I have here. If they could use the podium, thank you. Larry Steingold and Bill Miley, please.
Hi, Larry Steingold. I think this is a very good program. Number one, appoint ad hoc, great, desired city funding level, great. Number three, I have an issue. If I was up there, sitting there, I would politely ask them to, we could table it for two weeks or three weeks or four weeks so that they could get OUSD approval and have them draft the agreement because our legal is 365 an hour. And if we're gonna contribute 15 grand, I don't want to spend 5 grand for legal. Sorry. Okay, there's a better way to spend the money. I think, I think it's a great idea. Signing up with the fire council, we're giving them money. They can, they can hire these kids or train the kids to become fire inspectors because now this space has been qualified for cert training, and we can have them all become cert, certified. Just like all you can sign up to become cert, certified, right? Because you lead by example, right? So fire hardening should be the one thing where, they're already growing stuff now. That can be expanded, a greenhouse, great. But we need the fire inspectors because it's gonna take the fire department decades to inspect all the homes. If we had another 10 or 15 or 20 people, we'd get it all done, and then we see what happens. But I think that's what I would suggest. But I would table it until they get permission to enter into a financial agreement with us, with the city, and to form up stuff. Because, I mean, as somebody mentioned, you know, it's inspirational, it's great, but something with more nuts and bolts and, on the fin, on that end of it. Because to just start negotiating and have OUSD go, eh, not interested, or you guys fund it, we're not interested, we're already making a deal with you on the swimming pool, we're getting knee-deep in with OUSD, so that's okay too. So.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. Bill Miley, please.
Adding to Larry's comment about waiting a couple of weeks, you might consider passing a resolution now indicating your support, waiting for the school district to support their teacher. So I have some random comments. The title I would see here would be, "An Ambassador Educational and Service Program." Ambassador, wow, that's great. I like that. Two, if I were trustee, I would be excited by this idea. This is a community-based student involvement program. It provides student involvement, education, career futures, and it deals with the future of our world, the immediate future, the long-term future. Fire is in the world we now reside in, and carbon dioxide heating of the climate is screwing up the world. This addresses that. It addresses with 103 ambassadors, which may become 500 ambassadors, 300, this has all sorts of replication potential. The, there's a list of confirmed partners already in the community, which I think is just outstanding, it's already been established. And the $88,000 that would be the maximum for the program now seems well worth providing that as a grant offer from the city. I see this as a, like planting a young sapling oak tree, which will grow larger and drop acorns, and we have a whole forest eventually throughout educational districts in California. I think that's outstanding. Let's see. Uh, one more thing. This is actually a preventive program. It prevents bad things from happening in the future. It involves. [inaudible]. Students, families, and careers throughout the rest of their life.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Appreciate it.
Do it.
Thank you.
Do a resolution, and then get them to agree, and get them to move.
Thank you. Did we get more popular online?
No attendees on Zoom here.
This is a question maybe for Mr. Harvey. If, if we were to indicate, for example, that, I'm just gonna paraphrase and I'll say it more better, or somebody will say it better than I can. We're interested in the program, there's details to be worked out, I'm personally interested in the OUSD leadership expressing their details to us, but we, but I'm interested in the program, and I'm even happy to say something like, the middle ground, 50,000 more maybe someday soon, or something like that. That is completely okay with me, but it seems to me, the indication of our interest in the program, I think, my, my first, my initial thought is that I do want to involve the leadership of OUSD in the, in the project. So I guess the question is, if we were to take that tact, is that something reasonable enough to begin to pursue?
Absolutely, and that's part of the reason why I was suggesting that we, you know, yes, it, it is a grant, but it's also a professional services agreement because we would want to focus on that scope of services. You know, for instance, you heard that you would be receiving native plants. So, you know, you're, you're wanting to indicate, you know, what you're providing and what you're expecting to receive in return. The agreement would have to be with OUSD administration, with, you know, the superintendent or the assistant or their designee. So that's, and then, and then, of course, we also heard some discussion about transportation, and with that, there's always some liability, so you want to make sure that you're spelling that out. And so, and then, we would bring this back to you. I would, I would envision that we would hammer out the scope of services, we'd bring it back to you and you could review it and, and approve it, and it wouldn't take a huge long amount of time because we have the base for it here. That way you know exactly what you will get.
And if I may add, once you, as a body, agree on what the terms that you're comfortable with, with the program, that can then be proposed to OUSD, even if they don't want to do their own ad hoc committee, you could work on it, continue to work on it, and then basically pitch it to them.
Good, because right now, initially, my answer is yes, I like the idea, I love it, the program has many virtues, and then I just want to involve the leadership, that's really what it comes down to in detail.
We just need to know the funding level that you're interested in, and, you know, I would want to know if you want, the other thought that the Assistant City Attorney and I were discussing was, you know, if there is a, a transportation donation, what works better for the city is if that went directly to the school district, and if they could be responsible for transporting the children, that would work better. So we could have some things in there. I, I don't think it kills the program, I just think it's just, you know, we would be spelling out, this is what works best for us.
And if we were to donate a vehicle for it, could it be specified that it's for her program and it's not to?
Yes, absolutely. And, and then, and that's, I like that as well, because then we say, look, you know, we're giving you this vehicle, you are now responsible for this. We are not part of that component. This is why this vehicle's coming to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would want, I would want any talk of the vehicle to not be involved in, until we, until we know what, you know, what is available and what our options are there.
I think what Mr. Harvey and I were talking about is just concerns that the city is taking on the liability of transporting the children in the long term is not something we generally recommend. If you need a temporary solution while the program gets its feet off the ground, it's something that you could explore with Ms. Burgess, but long-term, it's not recommended.
And it might be that the school district, I mean, the school district does this often. They, they move their kids around.
Yep.
So, so they know how to, they know how to work this.
Yes, they know how to move the children, yes, correct.
And they're already covered.
So they may already have, they may have other solutions they're able to offer in furtherance of the program.
Which, which leads to why, you know, bringing leadership in makes, makes great sense, and, and I, I think.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I think to Ms. Cohen's remarks, I've spoken to Atticus as well, and, you know, I, I can't see that leadership would, would have a problem with this. Maybe they don't want an ad hoc, I don't know, but that's fine, you know?
Yeah, that is fine.
This can be separate, or, you know?
Right, we have an ad hoc, and that's fine, if they don't want that, we can just go to them with what our ad hoc says.
I do have that, in some sense, the larger view in mind, and that is, or, another view in mind, and that is, I do want to, as we have our general negotiations with OUSD on several fronts, if this is also something that is sort of considered in our general relationship, I would like that to be understood.
Well, I think that's part of, that was why Councilmember Rule sent this over to the superintendent. You said, you know, hey, this is one of the three items or four items that I want to talk about.
Yeah, fair enough.
I, I just wouldn't want to make it contingent on.
Nope, not at all.
We're taking action, so that's just more of an awareness.
Yeah, no, but it can be part of the conversation for sure. And, you know, I, I think, once we get, if, if, and if we get this locked down, we can think of expansions, I mean, we talked about, you know, native nursery-growing trees, public works, about, you know, what, I mean, I don't need to expand out, but I, I think that it's, the potential is, is great.
I would want to put that in the scope of services that we are expecting to receive, I mean, I, because we do have a need, and that would be terrific.
Sure.
We would not have to source them, they're expensive to buy, because we're only, as you know, we're, we're just buying natives.
Right.
You know?
And then to have them locally grown by our students is fantastic.
Right.
It's the best.
Right.
So I, I have a few comments.
Yep.
And, you know, my first one is, I go back to when we were talking about the Matilah Auditorium, which is that I, I don't know what money we have available. I want to know what money we have available, and I want to know what other projects are competing for that money before I would make a decision about, making a contribution to the. before I would make a decision about, um, making a contribution to this. I would also want to know the, you know, the details of scope of services, because once the school district looks at it, they may decide that some things are in and some things are out. And so deciding whether we contribute or not should be dependent upon what those services are. I, I definitely, because there's, there's a couple of places where, you know, there's overlap here. One is with the Fire Safe Council. So I understand that they have, you know, given a, a general supportive statement about this project, but I'd like to hear the details about how the programs that we've retained them to perform could potentially integrate the students and, you know, what that would entail. I, um, I also, on, I mean, I'm, I'm not inclined to commit our money on anything where I feel, this is me personally, but I think it, I think there's a lot of people in the community who feel this way, is that the county frequently does not contribute its share despite the fact that what we're doing is benefiting the unincorporated area, and the residents of the unincorporated area. And so before we put money out there, I, I'd want to see a proposal to the county that they, you know, that we do some type of matching funds type of an arrangement so that, so that they're participating in it. But I do, in, oh, and then the other place where there's overlap, and I actually kind of like this, is that, you know, I know the Land Conservancy has been, you know, talking to us about their greenhouse. I love the idea that Nordhoff students would be in competition with the land.
They had no desire to work with them.
You know, to, I, I perceive that there is a need for these native plants. We should be oriented towards fire-resistant, you know, native plants. And the idea that we, you know, help some high school students, you know, develop a program that supplies that to the community is probably the most desirable aspect that I see out of this program. I like the idea that kids would, you know, potentially be exposed to a career path and maybe, you know, get, you know, credits towards that. So there's definitely things about this that I, I, I like about it, but before I would, you know, support any specific, you know, any... I'm fine with continuing, you know, saying, let's go forward and explore what's possible. But I'm not committing anything until I see, like, all those details.
Ms. Mang, can I just ask you? So you, you're on the sort of sheet of bringing it forward, but I'm sensing reservations.
Well, I'm with, you know, with Mr. Whitman. I want to see the finances and all of that, to see what we can afford, get everything dialed in with the district. I just think it makes sense to me. I like the fact that she's not in a rush, like it has to be yesterday or whatever, that she's willing to work with us, because it is an ongoing project. So...
Okay. Okay. So with the next, but, Mr. Harvey, what I heard you ask for was, if you were to pursue what the relationship would be and what the deliverables will be, you were also asking for some kind of dollar range. Did I hear you say that? And that doesn't mean a commitment yet, but something to shoot for?
Sorry to step on you.
No, no, go ahead.
You can change that. I mean, we could, I mean, if it's not, if, if it's more of the interest to move this forward, in February, we'll have a better idea of our financials. That's when we do our mid-year. We could certainly come before then with, with the, with the scope, and you guys can review and prove it. And we could say, you know, we're going to wait until we see what our numbers look like. I mean, it's up to you guys.
Right, and, and I would just say that, you know, when, when we were working on this and envisioning this, this would, this was meant to fall under the up to $1 million for fire hardening and climate resiliency that we have already appropriated up to $1 million and that we have spent, depending on whether or not we consider, you know, the stuff that we have spent around the city as climate resiliency, but up to $1 million, and I think we have only granted to the Fire Safe Council, whatever it was, 300 and whatever it was. So I, when, when I was thinking about the finances, I was thinking that it would fall under that tranche, and so that...
Fair enough.
Yeah, yeah, that was the idea.
So I have this, you know, concept in my own mind that the next dollar I spend, approve of spending on fire hardening is going to go to actually remove the most flammable tree, you know. I don't know what that tree is. I'd like to see our next money, you know, going towards actually removing fire hazard as opposed to educational.
I was gonna, let me just offer a little proposal. If, if we're okay with moving forward, but we're asking for more detail, if we were to ask the staff then to work with OUSD on a scope of services, and if we were to throw even just the, between 22,000 and 50,000, those two bottom ranges, something along those lines, not committing to, just giving you some kind of idea of scope, that seems reasonable enough to go forward, to me.
Yes.
Okay.
That's reasonable, I, I think that's reasonable for me, too. And, I mean, I think that if, that the, it's possible that with partnerships and donations, that, that our involvement could be a substantial involvement, and I would be comfortable with going with the low amount, because I have a good sense that we could, we already have contracts with the Chamber, we have contracts with the Fire Safe Council. I have, I have a, a strong intuitive sense that some of those partnerships that we already have could be significant contributors here.
That sounds right to me.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I agree. I think that there are partnerships and there are in-kind donations, and it behooves everybody to get the community as involved as is possible, including the business community through the, you know, through the, the Chamber. I just want to make sure that the actual stuff, like soil and pots and seeds and, you know, new greenhouses, the, the stuff that, you know, you really have to purchase is also sort of covered. So, you know, I wouldn't, I would just keep that in mind, that there's just going to have to be stuff purchased as well as getting in-kind donations, unless, of course, we were to get in-kind donations from the hardware store or something, you know? You never know.
But would that be part of the staff's scope of services that they'll work out?
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, what, even to talk about getting in-kind donations is a lot of work.
For sure.
Okay, it means a lot of telephone calls, a lot, you know, it, it, it's not just like someone's gonna hand it to you.
No question.
It's a lot of resources, personal, you know, time, time and energy resources, so.
And just the way that it's been described, even that, the dollar amounts that we're seeing for this kind of investment sounds wonderful. So I think it's more like just, I mean, I'm all for it. So it's just getting the detail and the leadership on board, and then bringing it back. So that, I'd like to make that motion, that we authorize the staff to go forward, working with OUSD leadership, to craft some outline of services in the range of not to exceed 20, not to exceed $50,000 in your scope of services, and come back to this council for review. There's no point in putting a minimum, is there?
No.
Yeah.
No.
That's my move.
All second.
Any more discussion? All right, we'll see what happens. Yep. We'll call Mayor. Councilmember Whitman.
Abstain.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Mang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Motion, basis. Well, thanks for bringing this forward. This is wonderful, great work.
Thank you.
Thank you to Ms. Cohen for reaching out and being who she is. Much appreciated.
In some ways, it's some of the best money we could spend on is our students. No, it, well, feel like I know. Absolutely.
I mean, the whole thing, it's the whole package.
I love it. All right, we are on item number six. Accept proposal from the Consultant Historic Resource Group to conduct the Historic Resource Inventory Survey Update.
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna hand things over to Ms. Macaluso, who has joined us up here at the dais.
Wonderful.
Yes, hello, my name is Maura Macaluso. I'm the principal planner here at the city. Thank you, City Manager Harvey, Mayor, and Councilmembers. So at the City Council and Historic Preservation Commission Joint Meeting on March 25th, 2025, the council approved the HPC's request to have the city's Historic Resources Inventory Survey updated. The existing survey was prepared in 2011, however, never adopted. The city council's 2025 approval was subject to the selection of a qualified historian and budgeted, and the budget for the update was approved at $63,000. As a refresher, and generally speaking, the survey update is meant to include structures built up to 1985, where the current survey includes structures up to 1960, to reevaluate the existing survey listings and determine their current integrity versus when the survey was originally prepared back in 2011. And the update will also include, as does the existing survey, a recommendation for specific structures to require historic resource reports prior to alterations that may affect the integrity of the resource. So, at the November 13th, 2025, regular meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission, the commission unanimously recommended the city select the Historic Resources Group, that's HRG, to prepare the update. The fiscal impact associated with the current ask is an additional appropriation of $25,050 in fiscal year 2526, on top of the approved $63,000 for an estimated total cost for this update of $88,050. So the options recommended in the, the admin report that you, that you all have include approving the HPC's selection and the additional cost, or of course, take no action or provide alternative direction to staff. And we do have our HPC chair here, and of course, staff to answer any questions.
So just to clarify, we've talked about this already. We approved this in our budget review, the $63,000, and it's really, you're asking for, or the request is for just the additional $25,000 because of this firm?
Correct.
And the firm was unanimously approved by the HPC?
I could just jump into, the other thing is, this body is the one to direct the contract. So that's...
No, understood.
Yep.
Yep. No, of course, I didn't mean to suggest otherwise, but thanks for the clarification. And I do have, I do have the HPC chair here in the public comment, but is there any questions either for HPC or? Okay, so let's do our public comments. I have Steve Quillacy, and then I have Gina McHatten. Thank you, sir.
Apologize for the bum knee. I have a cautionary tale. I have not seen this historic report. What I have seen was presented to me, and this is back in 2017, when I was trying to get a building permit to do some remodeling on my house, I saw what was presented to me and called a windshield survey. I don't know if that's part of this historic report or if it's something completely different. But in that windshield survey, so-called because someone drives around town and makes notes about various things they see through the windshield, okay? Well, next to my address on West Eucalyptus, there was the notation Pierpont, question mark. What does that mean? Is my house a Pierpont-designed house? Does that make it a landmark? At any rate, the way it was presented to me, I was guilty until proven innocent. It took me between $1,500 and $2,000 with a firm of historic assessors, I'm not sure what you call them, in Ventura, to prove that my house was not designed by Mr. Pierpont. And I did that to avoid going through what could have been an extended review period with the, with the Historic Preservation Commission, and Lord knows what else. But I would suggest that if you go ahead with this, that rather than an update, that you start fresh, because I can tell you there was a severe problem with the notation that was purported to refer to my house as a potentially landmarkable house, when it turned out it wasn't. And the only thing was a casual observation by a person none of us know. So please, if you're going to do this, and I'm not opposed to doing this, start fresh and make sure that you're talking about facts from day one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gina McHatten, please.
I am the chair of the HPC. So yes, that's what this is about, it's, it's starting fresh. It's having this organization who just got done doing Venturas. So they are familiar with the archives, they're familiar with the museum, how to learn about what they have been learning about, which is Ventura. So Ojai just seems a natural fit. We, we had 10 bids, which was wonderful. Out of that 10 bids, we picked four to be interviewed, and it was interviewed by Craig Walker, myself, and Maura. And we all picked the same order of, of how we felt that they would fit with Ojai, and this being the one that we all felt was number one. They were, all the bids were different costs, but when you start to talk to them and realize what exactly they were offering, whether it was too much, too, more than what we asked for, less than what we asked for, when we asked them to go back, they were all around the same amount. So this is the going rate of what a city this size with this kind of history would, would have. We, it's supposed to be updated every five years. Very few towns actually are, can afford to do that. That's why we are making sure that it's back to 1985, so we can have a nice, long, get our money's worth here. And also, when we have this company, it's a company that we will be able to, to utilize. When you all have questions, it's not like it's a one-and-done and they're, they're left, they're, they're gone. They, they will be around to answer questions. The last company that did it, it was a little questionable about the notes. They weren't consistent, like what happened there. That's why Craig Walker's gonna be the liaison. He is a local historian. He wrote the Ojai history book, and he's also been a commissioner for a long time, and he's currently a commissioner. So he will be able to fill in a lot of the blanks if they have any questions. It is always done in a windshield survey, because you don't go door-to-door, you don't, you try not to be invasive. Out of the thousands of properties that they will be looking at, there will only be like 300, 200, 300 properties that will be considered possibly historic. And it's important that we know our inventory. It's important for everybody, because when they come to the front desk or when they come to Lucas, he won't have to wonder. He can just look, it's a one, it's one of the couple hundreds that's been adopted by council as being possibly historic. And anything that's a two, he doesn't have to think about anymore. It's, it's no longer possibly historic, it, there's not a question. So that takes a lot of time away. It's also really good for realtors, whether you have a client who wants something historic or maybe that doesn't want something historic. They can just flip through this, this is the public document.
If you can, I have a couple of questions for Ms. McHatten. So we, we, if our microphone could be turned back on. Do you feel that this firm would be able to avoid the difficulties that Mr. Quillacy brought up?
Yes, Craig Walker and Maura and myself.
Because of Craig especially.
Yeah, we were very, when we interviewed them, we made sure that we went over the columns and what the problems were in the past and what we would want in those, in the information that we would find important, because, yeah, it, it was a little spotty last time, and it also was never adopted. So it was kind of this precarious document that you paid for. precarious document that you paid for, and then you kind of didn't really get your your money's worth. But this time, we really want to make sure that it is done properly, and it is done by um somebody who's really knows the the area and and having the help of someone like Craig as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
If I may.
Yeah, please go.
Just add to that, um once the report comes and the HPC makes recommendations, only properties that are being approved by the council as either a historic property or structures of merit should fall in the um difficulties, I I don't want, know what happened in twenty-seventeen when we were here, um that Mr. Quilisi had. So it should only apply to to properties that are formally recognized.
Thank you. That's useful. Any other questions? Yes, please.
Mayor, it looks like we have one more public comment.
Okay.
Mr. Steigl.
Thank you.
My turn?
Yes, thanks. Appreciate you being here.
Larry Steigl. Great idea. Please change the wording from update to new because she said it's, we're gonna redo it and it's gonna be done right, and she wants to start fresh. And that's the words she used. So update is not what we're doing here. It's a complete beginning to end to get it done right, because once the properties are done, they're done. We don't, then we won't need an update, because you won't have to go back ever again, because the property. And there are databases that could also help, but that's the company's job. But it's not an update, so if you could change that to remove it to a new, complete historic resources. I know.
But you can. It's all right. Sorry, I was talking to the city attorney. I'm sorry.
You can, no, that's fine. But that's what I would recommend, please, because just an update, we're just redoing it over and over again and creating the same problem.
Thank you. Yes, please, come up. Yes, respond.
The reason why we call it an update instead of something new is we're not gonna take the information and not look at it. We're not gonna throw it in the trash. They're gonna use it as a baseline to see what was done before and then work from that and correct it and and make it so. They have to, it would be silly to just pretend that it didn't exist. So they will be looking at it and going from there uh and making their suggestions and corrections, but um they have, they will be using it as a starting point, just so it's.
You're building on past work.
Right.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you. I don't have any questions. I I see no reason not to proceed, but go ahead.
Yeah, I do. I do have a question, and I was just hoping that the city attorney could just expand a little bit upon the idea that of 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 uh what designations potentially come out of this that uh end up being, you know, some type of unilateral impediment to the homeowner doing things to their property. Are, what steps have to take place before they fall into that category? And is it, for a residential home, is it always a decision to landmark? Or is it, you know, is there some discretion to to designate them and pose that on a piece of property?
So the HPC's code related to this requires extensive noticing to the property owner in a hearing process to go through um to make it historic. You can force people to be historic properties um as a body. However, that does come with potential legal challenges if the property owner is not consenting. So um my recommendation would be to engage with property owners that they they want their properties to either be a structure of merit or designated historic. You know, with the historic properties, there are benefits that carry with that.
The Mills Act.
The Mills Act is a huge one. Structures of Merit doesn't have that same benefit. It's a lower classification. So in, I think, the Ojai way would be to be very collaborative about this approach and engaging with property owners once they're identified on whether or not they're interested in that, whether or not the property is important enough that it's it's important to, uh or historic, I don't, I don't know how to frame that, that it's historic and significant enough that the council would decide to move forward anyways with preserving the property? If you know what I mean. I can't think of anything that comes to mind.
Yeah, but I I think you're, I understand what you're saying, and so if I understand correctly, what this uh inventory survey does is actually provides information. So when those issues come up, we're not making any of those decisions right now, but when the those informations come up, the the background information about historical significance is in this report.
Yes.
If I might add, Mr. Harvey, you, when you brought this up in the first place, I thought one of the motivations was you have a third party of expertise advising you about what the relevance of the property is instead of our own local historians or our own opinions. So it, in a way, it's, it fortifies your position, whatever that is.
It does, and there are multiple opportunities for the property owner and the public to be involved. And what the work plan speaks to is the, an optional council meeting. I'm gonna tell you that you're gonna definitely need more than one council meeting on this because the thought is this comes before the HPC. That in itself is gonna be a lengthy process um of them, you know, there there will be properties that fall off um the list based upon various factors. Then it's gonna need to come to the council. You are the body to adopt it. And their property owners are gonna be involved, not only the HPC, but also the council. And this might, I did went through this in Pacific Grove, and this took a few years.
And I believe that this has been going on for a few years, if I'm not mistaken.
But insert some rigor and some standards, and and it's it's much more thoughtful, and yes, it's very helpful to have a third party overseeing.
Yes, please.
The idea of the survey, it's, it is, um it's not a structures of merit, it's not for landmarking. It's to identify resources within the city of Ojai. It is our responsibility as HPC through SEQA, and um it's our responsibility to you all is to to make sure that we're doing every week that we can to notify you of possible resources. What we do with that information, uh maybe nothing. If someone doesn't want to tear down their house or doesn't want to take down uh character-defining features of something that we believe is historic, they'll never come to us, we'll never see them. It's just kind of puts that first um thing there that this is a possible resource for the city of Ojai, and we should look at it before we give permission to demo it or to tear down the the character-defining features. That is what it's for. It's not for structures of merit, it's not for landmarking. It's the first step for um just note letting, trying to figure out what we have here and making sure it's accurate just going forward. It's just a, it's a list of resources.
It seems to me we've actually already agreed that we want to do it. We're just talking about an increase of twenty-five thousand. But we're we're talking about it again. So I would propose that we we authorize the increased amount for the survey.
I second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Sorry, just, you're also authorizing us to enter into an agreement with the firm, too, so I think we should.
Oh, sorry. Yes, and the agreement with the firm.
Yes. And um I just want to say one thing.
Yep.
Based on my comment, you know, the work plan speaks to one optional city council meeting. I guess, I really feel strongly that it will probably be a few.
Thank you.
So this could be more than the amount that you've mentioned, but again, there seems to be a willingness and an interest to do that. I just want to say that.
Thanks for asking me to.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Do we have twenty-five thousand dollars extra to spend on this, and can you show us a budget that that?
In February, I can, but I I think, in all kidding aside, I think that you probably have.
But but, you know, I mean.
I think it's a reasonable, if you're, you know, you've already committed to this amount.
I know, I know. I guess, I get it, I get it.
Um, Mr. Whitman, are you okay with your seconding of the, also the firm?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just want to confirm, Mayor, and everyone, that the recommended eighty-eight thousand fifty dollars includes that twenty-five thousand we're discussing. Roll call.
Yep.
Count, Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes. Thank you.
Super. We're on our last item, um number seven, ratification of twenty-twenty-five City of Ojai Annual Historic Preservation Award nominees and Lifetime Achievement nominees.
That would be me again. Thank you, Mayor, and City Councilmembers.
Wonderful.
So for some time now, the um Historic Preservation Commission has awarded the Historic Person of the Year and Annual Preservation Award to people who have contributed to unique historical heritage um in the city. And criteria that was approved by the City Council in oh-seven is in your administrative report and includes a broad range of heritage preservation activities. On September eleventh, twenty-five, the Historic Preservation Commission voted to adopt uh HPC Resolution twenty-five oh-eight recommending the city council ratify uh this, this year's HPC nominations. Once the city ratifies these nominations, staff will work with the HPC Chair to schedule a presentation to um of the awards to the recipients here at the City Council and by the City Council. So this um year's nominations include Steven Adams for an annual award and the Playhouse Theater owner David Berger and his team. Robert Kubek, or Kupiak, Kupiak. That's the architect, and also Kerry Miller, who's a general contractor for an annual award also. And for the Lifetime Achievement Award, they have nominated the Gable of, Gables of Ojai owners, Robert, Alice, and Janelle Parsons and co-partner David Brown. And so tonight would be, again, the ratification, and then we will get a date soon for the presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions? I have one public comment, and it's Gina McHatten again. Please come up. Thanks.
I really don't have much to say. I just wanted to say that there never seems to be a shortage of um individuals every year. Who are we gonna come up with? But then I'm surprised how many people we um have to whittle down from because there's always people here in Ojai that are um work hard to preserve and to document the history of Ojai. So I just ask that you ratify these nominations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Any comments? Great.
I'll make a motion to ratify it.
I'll second.
Wonderful.
Great.
All right. Take care, Eddie.
Roll call. Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes. Thank you so much. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Yes. Councilmember Reports, I will just say very briefly that um we have some, there's a couple of commission openings, as you all know. Some will be started. Um we'll start some interviewing again soon. Some we will bring forward to the council to be ratified by this body even as early as next week. And um so all, hopefully, over the next couple of months, we'll we'll get interviews and those spots filled. That's the only thing I have. Anything else? Councilmember Report-wise? Future agenda items? We got a lot of agenda items.
We put a bunch on tonight.
Yes.
Yep, okay. Then we will adjourn. Thank you.
We'll adjourn to the Christmas uh parade.
Well, you still have next week.
Yes.